Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Uh, let's do our roll call, please.
Mark Fraschard.
Absent excuse.
Joanne Sherkey.
Here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
Ernie Raisa.
Here.
Kristy Hillman.
Here.
Crystal Regan.
Here.
Sandy Cuthell.
Here.
Okay, we're all here. Um, first thing on agenda, we have a public hearing for the Colony Water Line. I'll entertain a motion that we, uh, open up the, uh, public hearing at this time.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Supervisor, that we open up the public hearing for the Colony Water Line at seven o'clock sharp.
Support.
Okay, motion, support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries. This time, I'd like to open up the, uh, public hearing for, um, the Colony Water Main Project. Um, I wanted to do a, a brief summary. Forgive me, I'm going, um, I stepped on my glasses, these are backups and they don't work clear at close, so I'm... But I need these to see you guys out there, so. Um, basically, uh, what it is, is it's a $1.4 million project, approximately. And, um, to replace the existing old water line along the North Channel on the Colony Road, and then put fire hydrants, um, on the, I guess, the canal side of the road. Um, and once that's done, uh, the Colony Homeowners Association can sign... The Colony Homeowners Association owns the water line right now. They can sign it over to the township and will take it, and then it will be a municipal water system. And it'll put the Colony, uh, Homeowners Association out of the water business. Um, the, and the, the basic plan is to, uh, replace the, the line around, uh, along the water. It's about 100 years old, 90 years old, and it's a rough shape. Uh, lots of water leaks, um, and in that project too, we're gonna, uh, connect it from, uh, go under the canal from Anchor Bay Drive and connect it so via Loop. In other words, from M-29 to the Colony Drive. Uh, we're gonna also put in fire hydrants along the North Channel and on the canal side. Um, and every, every year, we get a water assessment or from the DEQ. And this is going back, uh, well, this is this year's. And, I mean, it's going back from the mid 90s. The first paragraph in, uh, is the Clay Township Water System Survey that they give us. The first, um, paragraph basically that says, "This water line needs to be replaced from the DEQ." And some point in ti- time, in fact, here is this year's, and right here it is, first page. In some point in time, they're gonna shut it down and say, "It needs to happen." And that's one thing that the township would like to avoid. Um, because if we have to do it under emergency repair, the cost will be five, 10 times more than it is doing it this system, going out and getting competitive bids and, uh, and going forward like that. I know firsthand, that's big sink hole in Frazier, that was emergency repair. And Candace Miller, she told me that costs about nine times more than it probably would've if they could've done it as a planned project like this. Um, let's see. Uh, right now, we have, um, a public hearing, and we're gonna have to have a second public hearing, which we'll, uh, we'll talk about that later on. And, um, to, to fund this, we're gonna go out for bonds, a bonding project. And we don't know exact cost of the construction. That will get, well, hopefully, we'll put it out for bids. What do you suggest, in April, was it, Jeff? May or June? Maybe April? May or June? And, um, and then, uh, you know, we'd start the, uh, the process as far as the construction then. I myself personally think it needs to be done, uh, for several reasons. It's, it'll improve public safety down there with the higher fire hydrants throughout the whole road. Uh, it's gonna improve the quality of water and the pressure that you're receiving the water. And, uh, just makes sense. I'm gonna do a little show and tell. This is what your water main looks like now. And I don't wanna freak too many people out. The water is safe to drink. This is not aesthetically pleasing. Every time we, we have a, turn the fire hydrant on, you ask why you get rusty water. This is what your water's going through right now. So, in fact, did you guys see it? In fact, if you guys wanna take a look at it, you can pass it around. I don't need it back. Actually, that's what it is. You're gonna, you're gonna get rusty hands, too. But that's what, that's the shape of it right now. Um, so if you'd like to, uh, make a, and I do wanna say too, we did have eight letters we received, which we have copies on the board, um, for the, uh, public hearing. And, uh, so if you guys wanna come and, uh, and, uh, make a, have a public statement, please give us your name and address, and, uh, we'll give you, uh, three minutes or so, and, uh, have at it. So, uh, do I have any public comments as far as the, the project? Can you come on up to the podium just? Yeah, thanks. Pretty good, huh?
Mr. Henry, what was your last name?
Desalitz. 7534 Colony.
Okay.
7534? Thank you.
The question that I have, and it was brought to my attention after I signed this petition, was when they put the six-inch line on the canal side, did the people that live at the far end of the street, where they have the four-inch, they help pay for that?
You know, I don't know. That was, that's your guys' water line, it's not the municipality's?
Okay, they're just telling us, "Yeah, we did," and we don't know that. So, they want us to help pay for theirs. And the other question that I had, when they put the bridges in, which was 30 years ago, they put allowance for a pipe. They did that on all the bridges down there. Did they do it at the bridge, the first bridge? Or did they just?
Yes, yes.
There's an eight-inch there?
Yes.
Okay, that, that was my second question.
Okay.
And I, and I wanna take my name off the petition until we find that I signed with Jerry Gordon, until I find out what's going on.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. And I do wanna mention too, uh, I think the, it was like 80, over 83% of the total people agreed to do this. Okay, any other public comments at this time? Come on up, state your name and address.
Hi.
Hi.
Marta Bates Bourbon, uh, 7525 Colony. Um, basically, I have a question, not a comment. Um, is it known how old the, uh, the line is on the canal?
What, 64? 1964 it went in.
Okay. I'm just wondering why we don't get ours end replaced? I mean, it's, what, 60, 60 years old?
That's actually, in the life of, in the life of water lines, that's not that old. And, and, and the, the type of a water line it is, it's up to, to speed.
But if we're gonna share in the expense to have a new water line for half of the street, why not do it for all of us?
Well, let me tell you this. This is, I'm not, I don't wanna engage, this is co- public comments, but once that's turned over to the, to the Clay Township, and that needs to be replaced, Clay Township's gonna pay for it. You won't have to pay anything.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
So, it's a better deal for you.
All right, that will be in writing and everything?
Well, it's, it's like any, anything, the Clay Township's gonna own it.
Okay, all right.
Right.
After the 20 years? Oh, okay. Okay, um. There was one other question I have. Oh, um, in the paperwork that we've received and in the, um, petition, it was quoted approximately $95 per foot of road frontage for a cost. Um, and then, um, which I did not sign. However, um, we got a packet of information from the Colony Association tonight, and they're talking about, um, an amount that's much more than that. So, you know, I...
I don't know what you received tonight.
Okay. Yeah, they're saying sixty, almost $64 a month. Or $510 annually. That's twice as much as the amount that was on the petition.
Yeah, I have no idea what you're looking at. That's between you and the association, I have no idea. I know what, what we assessed it, the special assessment is for, and that's what it is.
Okay, will the township be the ultimate decider of how the cost is allocated, or just?
Yes.
Okay, it will?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Or comments, I should say. Come on up, state your name and address.
Steve Desalitz, 7554 Colony. Um, all that, we just got this, it's just the minutes and the stuff on our association. We're gonna get billed for a water line. It says right here, only the people on the North Channel will sign for the new water main petition. Canal owners will not have a vote.
I don't know what you're reading, sir.
Reading the minutes that they put out.
I...
But we will not have a vote on if I get billed for a water line or not? Isn't, isn't that...
I, I, I'm, I can't comment because I don't know what they gave you. I'll, I'll read it later, I'm not gonna read it now. I, but...
I'm just saying.
But at, the whole road from M-29 to the end, 81% or 83% signed for it.
I, I just, I never even found out about it until a couple of weeks back. Um, but I don't get a vote on that. Is that true?
No, you, you, you're accounted in the petition.
I didn't.
If you don't sign...
I've never even seen a petition.
If you don't sign, that means you're got, you're down as a no. Any other, uh, comments, please?
I think there's more.
At the end, maybe?
Okay, all right.
Okay? Any other comments? Come on up.
Keith Jones, 7527 Colony. Um, I've just got a couple issues. I mean, I understand that the water line needs to be replaced, but I have a real plow, problem with the way it's gonna be funded. I mean, you basically got the canal lots that are subsidizing the channel lots. Cause you got multiple, you got like multiple lot owners on the canal paying full price for both lots. And then you've got the channel part of it, they're only paying it, I don't know if they're paying one side and partial on the other side. But you got both sides of the street on the canal subsidizing people that aren't paying for both lots. I mean, if that's the case, I should get, uh, I shouldn't have to pay for both lots. You have a lot of those people that have boathouses on the opposite side, they have water, they have nicer boathouses than a lot of us have for houses. So I have a real problem with that. My, uh, my other problem is the board for the street had nothing to do with the second petition. The board is supposed to be the governing body of the street, yet we had nothing to do with it. We didn't present this petition, which I have a problem with the way this petition was presented. A lot of the people that signed it really misunderstood what they were being told. And I'm sure you're gonna see a lot of them rescind their vote because they're not happy with the way it was presented. So I have, I have a real, a real problem with that. The way the petition was put around, the way it was explained, and I don't think they understood what they agreed to, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Vince Bojan, 7745 Colony Drive. Um, a few, few points were made here that I agree with. A, I don't think that the second petition was presented in, in the way that it actually is. I agree that it was presented to us as if they were replacing the water main from M-29 through the Loop to Anchor Bay Drive. Um, that was the petition that I assigned. Now, my real problem here is that we have an association that we've already replaced the street, given it away. We're replacing the water main now, giving it away. We don't own the lighthouse. We own a piece of property at the end, which could go to fund this project. We have an offer on that property. I don't know what the board's doing, and we kind of get the information like this delivered to us. Now, if we own that property, that's money in our bank, we're paying taxes on this, this, we have this association to pay all these things. We're giving all of the association properties away. What is this association doing for us now at this point? If we do this, and I agree, we need to do it. And I'm, as much as I disagree as well as how we're funding it and everything else, it needs to be done, and I, I don't disagree with that. However, if we give everything away and the association is, we no longer have any property, I think this association should be dissolved as long as, right along with us owning this water line. If, if this association is antiquated and no longer useful to the residents, we're paying money for nothing.
Yep.
And I think, and I think that's where we're at with this whole thing. And again, I'm for replacing the water main, but I think it should include some language to also dissolve this association when we're done with it.
Yeah, that's a whole different, separate issue, and that's really, that's your guys' association.
I understand.
So, okay?
But I just wanted to...
Right. All right, thank you. Any other public comments?
My name is Phil Pacoski. Um, I'm at 7901 Colony Drive. Um, I didn't understand what this whole second petition was because we signed the first petition, and then all of a sudden, we had 51% of the votes evidently. All of a sudden, we're getting a second petition. I don't know what the second petition has to do, uh, or if that's the one that we're using now, or was it the first one that we're using? Uh, it's, it hasn't been finalized. I'm asking these questions. Um, cause the first one, uh, was basically the, the way I understood it was the streets. Riverlots were gonna basically be paying the, for the water lines in front of their places. Then the second one come around, and this kinda lied to a little bit, uh, about, and I did not sign it, uh, about the second petition, about, um, people come to my house, and they tell me my neighbor's signed, and that I should sign and everything else like this. My neighbor's wasn't even in town, and I had already gotten off the phone because they had called him, and he said he wasn't gonna sign. Okay, so there's a little bit of problem there. Uh, the other way, the last thing I just wanna say is that, you know, you got one-third of the street with double occupancies on the line. You got a mile of the street that has, I don't know exactly if they're using both sides of the road, uh, for, like, if there's gonna be, if you have three lots on the river, you're gonna pay for three lots on the river? Or are you gonna pay for six lots for on both sides because of the fact that you do have water mains going in on both sides? Uh, you have boathouses with, that have bathrooms, some have corridors and everything else like this. Uh, if it's a deeded lot, and if there's an excess to, uh, put on each lot a, uh, a water line or a, and a sewer line, that they should be taxed, or amounts should be put onto each lot that you could have a water line on, whether there's three lots or two lots, because of the fact that down the liner, you could bulldoze the house, and then you have the lots that, you know, have to be tapped, excuse me, tapped into to be used. And I just feel that, you know, uh, I just wanna make it fair. I think the water line should be done, but I think it should be fair that the people in the front part of the street should not have to pay a full thing from in front of their house when they got two taps per 65 feet, whereas the other side you're running, uh, you're gonna have one tap for the last mile and a half. And I just, I just feel there's gotta be some way, maybe somebody that's not part of the street should get in and bit involved and, and just say, "This is how we're gonna have to do it," and make it, just to make it fair. And, uh, that's my statement.
All right, thanks, Tom.
Thanks.
Jerry Gordon, 8351 Colony. I'm the one that contacted most of these people. And contrary to what Phil said, nobody was lied to. Period. When I moved on the street, it was 1962, and I moved in, there was a gravel road, and we had wooden bridges, and we had a rusty tower. Now, I didn't do my due diligence like most everybody in here. I didn't realize I was part of a homeowners association, that when the school buses couldn't get over the bridge, we had to replace the bridges. We all did. I think you'll all agree to that. When the road was done, we did the roads. We were very lucky that the MDOT took the road over. So, any problems we have with the road from now on, it's MDOT's problem. The same thing is gonna be true with this water line. When it's done, the township owns it, we're out of the water business. And that's exactly what I told everybody in here. I told them exactly what it was gonna cost them. And Barb Shutt can explain what the rules are. I can understand Keith's position. Why is he paying on one side of the road, and his neighbor on the other side, Henry, is paying also? Barb, if you would explain that, you can explain to them, that's the way the law says it is. Is that correct? On the front? Whether it... I believe it's House Bill 188? Now, everybody, uh, Steve, yours was putting, you were in Mexico at the time we went through with this. Your petition was put in your door. Hank had one that he could've showed you, whatever. Yes, you were.
No, I'm saying we never got...
This is, no, no.
No, on the outside, we didn't put it in.
Hey, Jerry, direct the toss, not...
Yeah, okay, but anyway, I'm just saying that we're all in this thing together. If the, if the water line were to go down tomorrow, where we had a collapse or whatever, which it could happen, like Artie said earlier, it would cost us many times more than what it's gonna cost us now. We all own the water line. We all, according to the bylaws that you bought into when you bought your property, you agreed to pay for your portion. We all pay the same based on how much property we have. And it's, it's fair. We gotta get out of the water business, or it could be really a big hit. I personally, I was happy with the water we had. I had good water pressure, I've drank it since 1962. But as time has come that we have to do something. It's gonna break. And when it breaks, you have somebody come in on an emergency, you're at their mercy, really. So, and the cost, you know, is about, let's say it's $5.50 a, a year to get out from under for a 60-foot lot, which is the average size lot. You're already paying $160 a year now for the maintenance fund. Now, the way it's set up, and Barb Shutt will tell you this also, if this does not go through, there will be a very significant increase in the maintenance fund because they have to build it up to a certain amount to be able to handle an emergency. And it could be like $100 and a quarter, a quarter, which is more than the line is gonna cost you. So it, it's a good deal. Uh, you know, we have to do it. And this is the opportunity to do it because the township's willing to take it over. And we're out from under it. Mike, I, I, I'll answer questions.
No, this is public comments, we, this... So, thanks, Jerry.
Okay, if anybody wants to talk to me about it, I'd be more than glad to go over what all the details show you. You know, everything, I can't show you who paid for it in 68. That was, you know, seven years ago.
7591 Colony?
And what's your name?
Mike Keller. Um, I was listening to Jerry talk, and the only, the one concern that I had was uh, the $160 that, uh, individual homeowners are paying, um, yearly for water maintenance. I sort of got the idea that, uh, that's gonna be subtracted from our yearly assessment. Is that gonna be subtracted from our yearly assessment for the duration of, uh, loan, or just the first year?
Could I ask that?
Sure.
No, what I said, Mike, was, right now, it's gonna be a tax of like $450 for a 60-foot lot. You're already paying $160. And this apparently was confusing for some people. Your net payment is gonna be somewhere around $250, based on the quotes coming back like Jeff says they should come back, and that the interest rates stay the same as they are. And that $160, you will never have to pay again. So really, you have a net cost, it's gonna be about $250 a year for a 60-foot lot.
So you're...
You're out of the water business, that's good.
If I hear you're right, that $160 is gonna be sub, sub, basically subtracted from...
It disappears.
That is not gonna be charged along, if we don't have to maintain it, that's Artie's problem.
Thanks.
And the other thing, Jerry, just as you left, you indicated that you don't know, um, how the, uh, six-inch water main was paid for. There is, there is a little problem that, you know, again, probably the people that paid for the six-inch water line have with not knowing whether the four-inch water line residents helped contribute to that. It sounds like if you're an association, they did, but you would also think that someone would be able to verify that.
Well, there's been a lot of time spent trying to find, we don't, we don't, we haven't had the ledgers because the treasure's out of the country right now. But in all the minutes that we've had, everything else says that the Colony Park Association paid for it. Now, when it went through, that was actually the Colony Park Water Company, which was of the association. They, when it went through, I believe it was to feed the line on the river. Because nobody on the canal side for several years didn't even hook up to it. So I can't believe that only the people on the canal would've paid for it if they didn't even hook up to it. But I can't show you a cash check to some company back, and I won't say this, at one time, we could've gotten in there for $3.50 a foot. And our board at that time decided not to do it. So if you wanna blame anybody for this mess, it's them.
Thank you.
That's not the board we have to talk with.
Thank you. Can, can, can you come on up, you? Say your name and address.
Actually, we had a vote back then. I've been doing nothing but researching, trying to find out how that water line was paid for back when we built the six-inch canal, okay? And from everything that I can see, but it's only circumstantial, I don't see a canceled check with the amount of money, you know? So that's one thing. of money, you know? So, that's one thing. The other thing is that when we voted in 1963, and again, in 19, I believe, 65, to push that water line through, it was 52, 52 people against and 35 for. And of course, it went down. And that was the vote at a board meeting. And of course, we didn't start a petition or try and get it then, and then went back and tried again. The second time we got it, because we had to get it, we had had, I don't know how many breaks in the water line, and something had to be done. So, so it wasn't the board that voted it down. It was the whole association who was sitting there for the annual meeting. And of those people, it was something like 56 to 60 people that were there. So, continuously throughout the years, we've offered it up for a vote. We've had six runs at trying to get a water line petition done. We have tried. We've done the research. We've looked for government funds. We've done everything. I'm on the board. And they voted, everybody in the, who lives on Colony Drive, they had their chance to vote, for or against it. We always had people who voted for, but there were never enough. The petitions always went down, never got. So, here we are, trying to get a water line. We, when we started out, the first water line we tried to get, number one of the six that we've been trying for since 1963, the water line would have cost us about $369,000. Now, we're at $1,004,000. It kept increasing incrementally every time we went for it. And that was six times out of those years. We had a big gap in time there for a period because we had a terrible recession. And we figured, nobody's going to okay it during this terrible recession. Other than that, we pushed for it about every two or three years. So, here we are, and now maybe we have a chance to get it. And as a board, we've really tried hard to, to bring it to everybody. But, and I want to calm Mr. Desilts, because when he read those numbers, he was reading the September minutes. Things have changed. And if you will continue to read all the water line minutes throughout, you'll see that we have what we have now. The second petition and what the monies are and so forth, and how we changed from the first petition to the second petition. And yes, in the first petition, the North Channel people were the only ones who voted for the water line because they were the ones at that point in time were the only ones who were going to have to pay for it. So, we didn't feel it fair for anybody else to vote for it.
So, now that things have changed, do we get to re-vote?
No. We have the second petition, which was started entirely, you know, by another group of people. But it was an honest petition. It was a petition sanctioned by not Colony Park Association, because we already had a petition where we had 63% passed, signed, sealed, and delivered, and sent to the Clay Township Board. So, they decided they weren't happy with the petition. I understand that. It's a lot of money. But, but, so they put their own petition together, and they ran it around to all the people. And they had a much better signature ratio and percentage than we did with our petition. So, that must show you that they favor that petition far more than they favored ours. And that's pretty much all I have to say. I just wanted to answer some questions that people had, or some people, some statements that people made. And Don, would you say I'm pretty much correct about that? Is there anything you'd like to change? Or how about you, Keith? Do you agree with me?
This isn't...
That's pretty much what happened. Mr. and Mrs. Curd were there. You know about the second petition?
This isn't the proper, you shouldn't be changing with everybody else's, public comments.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't, I don't understand that. And I apologize.
You need to handle this part of it in your association meeting.
All right. It's just that all of these people are sitting here listening.
I understand. And we're all sitting here too. There's other people sitting here for...
And you're getting the wrong news.
There's other people sitting here for other business, too.
Okay, fine. I'm done.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Debbie Desilts, 7554 Colony. I just want to say that I think pretty much everyone in this room is in agreement that we, the new water line is needed. I think we have no questions about that. I think what our biggest concerns are, is how the water line was paid for back in whatever it is, 64, 65, 68, we've gotten several different answers, how that was paid for. Our question is, and also, how it's being divvied up with the charges for, like, the canal side of the streets getting double dipped, and then the channel side, it's one fee. So, it's kind of, just seems a little bit unbalanced there. And that's, I think, the most concern that we have. It's not the water line itself being put in. I just want it to be clear, we're, you know, we want everyone to have safe water and water pressure. That's not the concern.
Okay, thank you. There's so much per foot. Yeah, Barb, Barb, do you want to explain how it's being charged, or? So, I'm sorry, there's a lot of questions, so.
Yep. We won't put you on a three-minute timer, Barb.
The petition that went out was actually, and so was actually the first petition, but it was based off of Public Act 188 of 1954. And the way it says, Colony, when it goes down, you know, you got canal on both sides, and then you got the North Channel. The water line would be replaced on the North Channel part. And the reason why the boat wells were not is not everyone, same as the people on the canal, not everyone has a boat well that has living area. There's several that do down there that have living area, bathrooms, that sort of thing. But they actually pay extra on their water bills because they have to do another tap in, you know, the sewer, the water, another hookup. So, they pay on their regular bills for that. So, that is why, then when you go down the road, if the line is going down the road, and you have both sides, both sides would pay. They actually own on the other side, so it's their side. If they do have living quarters, they do pay extra for them on that side. So, we do have that amount charged differently on their water bills, not necessarily on the special assessment.
That's per state law.
Right. And then, and when it goes down, it has to be on both sides. If both sides are getting a benefit, which the water line would go on this side as far as tapping in, then they would pay on both sides. And that's the way that act reads it, the benefit that they would perceive. And then, this public hearing is basically to state that you are or not against the district itself. The second public hearing will be the roll. That one, we'll also send out another whole notice to everybody, along with, you got, you have 60 feet, it's so much a front foot, this is how much your base cost is. If somehow along the way you have a survey and says you have 59 feet, let me know. Then we'll have to correct it. That's what that second hearing is for. That second hearing is also so you can appeal to the tax tribunal if you want to. So, if you came to this one, and you still don't like the results, if it goes forward, then you would have to come to the second one, or write a letter, so that way you could protest to the tax tribunal. And then, if you do say something at the second hearing, we will send you information to state that you have and your appeal rights, and where you have to appeal to for the second time, for the second hearing. So, there's a two-hearing process. All this is still estimated cost, because we haven't done the bid package yet. Bonding hasn't been done yet. So, we're hoping with the estimates that are out there, and the contractors out there, that the bids come in low. Also, the dollar amount for the county water that you, the $40 you pay, that was taken off of the estimated cost. It was the estimated cost, whatever was in the fund as of when I first did it, was in November. So, if that fund grows, then that amount will be taken off as well and subtracted. So, then if we also have an exact contract cost, that will come down. So, you know, we're really hopeful that everyone's cost will come down from the dollar amount that's even on that petition. And then, once the bonds are sold, then you'll know the interest rate. This is sort of into the second hearing. But you can also, you can pay all at once, because the first billing is without interest, or you can pay monthly, whatever, but there would be a once-a-year billing to the residents for that 20-year spread.
It'd be included in their winter tax?
No. It will be a separate billing.
Okay, all separate.
If they are not, if they don't pay that particular disbursement time, or that installment payment, then it would go on their winter bill. But if they pay that installment, then it would be, you know, each year they would get it. And that would have to, the month that that bill goes out will have to be determined by the treasurer's office, and when bonds are sold, and when that comes due, so we know when, when that'll happen. And then, they'll also be notified of that, along with their first billing. Some people might be able to pay it all off. Some people might be able to pay half, whatever they're able to do. They can come in and do a monthly payment if they want, because it comes off of that declining balance. So, whatever they can do. Does that sort of give you a quick summary?
Yep. Thank you. Do I have any other public comments? You got to come up.
Again, Marita Bates, Burman, 7525. To Barb, if I may ask a question, did I understand you to say that the per foot cost would be based on road frontage?
Yes.
Both sides?
Yes.
Okay. That clears up a lot for me, because I was of the understanding with that second petition that the North Channel side would only pay for one side of the road frontage when they have property on both sides.
North Channel is one side. Canal is both sides. Where you live, both sides are on the canal.
No, but their road frontage is on both sides of the street.
They would have a, if they have a boathouse over here, and if it does have living area in it, they're being charged completely different for their water billing for it.
I'm not talking about the water billing. I'm talking about the assessment.
Well, that's the reason why the assessment's only on the one side. Just like your lot's here, and Mr. Smith's lot's over here on the road, so then you're both being charged. North Channel, I'm Mr. Jones, and I have this side and this side, then it's this side. If I have just a boathouse, it's just a boathouse, just like if somebody had a double lot on the colony, it's just a second lot for a boathouse.
Well, there's only one line on the canal side.
And that's per state law.
Okay. So, if I end up paying $500 a year for a 60-foot lot, someone on the North Channel end, and they have a 60-foot lot, they're not going to pay $1,000 a year? They pay just 500?
Because their boathouse, if it's just a boathouse, and the living area is just a boathouse.
I thought Public Act 188 was more fair, like when we paid for the road. That was road frontage. If I had an empty lot, it wouldn't make any difference. I still paid per foot of road frontage. Okay. Well, if that's the law. So, and then, as far as the, the water maintenance fund that we've been paying into for 20-some years, we were told, and as you know, my husband and I had the lawsuit going and everything, and, and we approached the township in regards to the shut-off notices for not paying into the fund. And it was explained to us that it's a fund to save for the eventual replacement of the water line. It wasn't called just a maintenance fund. And then, the township somehow took it over and did the billing back in 95. And to date, in fact, just in January, I got another shut-off notice. I've had 36 shut-off notices in 23 years, or not 23, in, I don't know, maybe 12 years. I get a shut-off notice every three months because I'm not paying into that fund anymore. And, and the township continues, you say it's, it's the, the association's water fund, but the township is...
The township is just collecting that fund for the association, and we're going to use those monies to help pay for this water line. So, if you owe extra, we give the listing to the association and it's up to you.
Well, again, why do, why do I still get a shut-off notice every time I don't pay into it?
Are we getting a little off topic here?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. We're getting a little off topic.
Okay. You're just saying, you never shut off my water in all these years.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, Debbie Beach, 7295 Colony. I'm somebody who's only been here for two years, and I bought a house not knowing I had a private water line. I signed five sheets saying that I had a private road, which I don't own. But that's between me and my title insurance company now. So, just to be real clear, if you have a boathouse on the canal, I mean, on, what do you, what do you guys call that? The channel. If you have a boathouse on the channel that has four bedrooms and a bathroom, that's not considered the same tap for, for the special, just special assessment. You're saying that they have extra water meters and extra, they pay extra for their usage. But for the special assessment district, their 60 feet is just 60 feet, right?
Yes. That's per state law.
That's, that is according to state law. Okay. My other thing is the 4.5%, being that this is a, going to be whether or not we own the water line, or Clay Township owns the water line, safe water is a public health issue. And I am just wondering, at 4.25%, there is noth, there is no better money out there that we could use for bonding?
Well, we're going to shop it out, but it's, it's over a 20-year span, and you know...
Because that's my home equity. I, you know, I mean...
Right. 10, 10 years from now, we could be paying 7% interest. So, it, it, right now, they're all estimates. We don't have any hard numbers until we put it out for bond, and we get the bids in. Like Barb said, these are, these are estimates on construction costs and everything.
But the 4.5, 4.25 is an estimate, just an estimate, too, so that there possibly we could find cheaper money out of the DQ.
Longer we wait, the more the interest rates are going up.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other public comments? During none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for the Colony Water.
Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing for the Colony Water Line at 7:47 PM.
Support.
Okay, motion support. Any discussion on that? During none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Next, we're going to move into bills payable.
I'll make a motion to pay bills payable in the amount of $10,685.12.
Okay, we have motion.
Support.
We have all kinds of support.
I beat her.
Any discussion? During none. Roll call vote, please.
Sandy Kupfo?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Ernie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Hey, motion passes. Let it clear up a little bit here. Next, we have public comments. Anyone? Just wait a second until they... Hang on a second. Yeah, they're, they're going, being cleared out. Thank you, Officer Stockwell. Officer, Sergeant. Still an officer.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Dan Turk. I'm a candidate for the 81st seat for the State House Representatives. I'm also China Township's current clerk. This is my campaign manager, Mr. John Goen, who's also trustee in China Township. I came before you guys today to put some clarity and expand on the topic that's been in our papers quite recently, the House Bill Number 40807 for the ferry legislation on Harrison's Island. Harson's Island. Going through and reading about what the public has, their perception of it, I felt that I should come here and expand on this a little bit and report my findings. I appeared before the Harson's Island Home Association last month and met Supervisor Bryson there as well, that would have been January, I believe, and mentioned that I would research this bill a little bit and report my findings. So I'm going to read my short report as a synopsis, I'll be brief because we like to keep our meetings, keep moving along as well. Shortly after the January meeting and listening to the general consensus of dismay of House Bill 4807 at the meeting, the initial complaint was the people seemed to lay on the premise that the board and the people were not heard and simply got a boilerplate response from our representatives and our legislature. I made a phone call to Representative Dan Lowers and spoke to him close to an hour on the topic, his opinion that the current legislation was adequate and complete. We agreed and disagreed, my whole input on it that I thought public hearing would have been an essential tool into it. My next phone conversation was with Inspector Randy Copeland from Michigan State Police Motor Carrier. As ferry legislation changed in Lansing, Michigan Public Service Commission got phased out and Michigan State Police were the now the policing action involved in it. In my phone conversation with Inspector Copeland and Michigan State Police, he stated that there are four different parties in the creation of the bill. First, Representative Dan Lowers, himself Inspector Copeland, a representative from the Michigan Public Service Commission, representative from Champions Auto Ferry. He cited that most of the problems circled around a ferry-controlled base law that was 110 years old, that just kind of getting band-aided and band-aided to meet up with the current needs of Champions Auto Ferry. So it wasn't really essentially effective. He also stated in 2012, the MPSC received a request for a fare increase for a dollar a unit from Champions. At that time, Champions were, or the MPSC denied the request on the premise that Champions were already working on a 7% profit margin and their ample reserve funds for capital improvements. It was also determined that Champions were to submit a yearly audit from a third-party auditor and submit a 10-year business improvement plan. At that time, Champions claimed that they couldn't do business without this fare increase, and a lawsuit was filed against the Michigan Public Service Commission, the audit of the business plan was never submitted. Everybody just kind of hunkered down and stuck their heels in the ground, and it was really going nowhere. Inspector Copeland also stated that it was time to start over and try a new approach. The first attempt of the bill failed miserably. The moment that the Michigan Public Service Commission stepped into the room with the negotiating parties, tensions filled the over past differences. He mentioned that they were basically growling at each other because of the bad blood they had in the past. The second attempt was a more productive framework, but the Michigan Public Service Commission also mentioned that Inspector, they felt Inspector Copeland was not being hard enough on Champions Auto Ferry as far as strict regulations were concerned. He kept asking, "Why are you trying to crush this business? We do need it as a viable ferry source back and forth from the mainland to Harson's Island." In my reading of House Bill 4807, the Michigan State Police conduct an audit at any time outlined in Section 2, it reads as follows, "The carrier shall furnish the Michigan Department of State Police its proper officials and its employees all the data in relation to operations, income, operating expenses, and transparency at a reasonable time." Basically, they can pull a general audit. So for the consumer, that's, that might be a plus. Section 4 also states, "Any complaint of any party against the carrier and cause of neglect, failure, or refusal of transparency or perform any rate fare or tariff or any rule of regulation will be subject to investigation by the Michigan State Police. Failure comply can be a maximum of three months in St. Clair County Jail." So they pretty put, they put a lot of stiff penalties if they don't comply. As all laws start out, this particular law is in its infancy. Not all angles of impact can possibly be determined at the time of conception and affected parties. In the event that I am elected in August primary and November, I would like to amend this legislation to allow full-blown public hearings on a township level to be used as a condiment or a tool for the Michigan State Police in a deciding factor, so the people can have a little bit of a voice in this. I want to make it clear that in this correspondence, I'm for business to be for profit, and transparency will have a new renewed trust between the carrier and the public. That's all I have to say. Mr. Goen?
We went to a couple of homeowners, Harson's Island homeowners, and their biggest thing was, they were up in arms because they didn't have, they sent letters out and nobody really answered them. They just got, they felt like they were left out of the whole picture. So we kind of thought, because Dan and I are the guys that worked on the bridge in Chana Township, the St. Clair Highway Bridge, and we have a good repertoire with the legislators in Lansing, so we kind of thought, let's, you know, let's talk to Dan, let's talk to Phil Pavah, Hernandez, who is also a northern St. Clair County representative, and let's get something that we can bring back, or Dan could bring back to the people and say, you know, "It's not falling on deaf ears. We want to listen to you, we want some kind of explanation, some kind of answers for you." That's kind of, you already was there at the meeting that we were at, and that's just kind of what, we're letting you know that there is somebody doing something, there's somebody looking into it.
And listening.
And listening, to know to your questions or whatever, so.
That's all I have, I will supply the board a copy of this letter for you guys.
All right, please do.
Thank you, and please support me in August and November.
All right, thanks for coming, thanks. Any other public comments this time? Coming up, state your name and address, please.
My name is Steve Sadler, 9179 Field Road. I actually not here for much of a public comment, but a public thank you. I'm the vice president for the Elginac Youth Football and Cheerleading League, and we would like to present Chief Rose with a donation for his continued support. Without him, we wouldn't have a safe environment for our family, our players, our grandparents, and everybody else.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, one thing I learned, any donations, we have to accept it, so we'll have to accept it at our next meeting. So. Okay, any other public comments? Hearing none. I'd like to amend the agenda as written to add under Police 4, under New Business Police 4.2, purchase of car computers for $28.47. That's a motion?
Support.
I have support, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of February 19th in synopsis, check reports, the February police building and zoning, parks and rec update reports, there was communication for kindergarten roundup, parks and rec at a glance, which I believe covers the next few months, and there were no notices or requests at this time.
Support.
Okay, motion support. Everyone go with the consent agenda?
Did you say the board meeting minutes of February 19th?
I did.
Did you mean the 20th?
Was it the 20th?
Yeah.
Was that a Tuesday?
The 20th, was that a Tuesday?
Yeah, so the president, it reads correct.
Yes, it reads correct.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have our supervisor's report. I'm going to need one of these. Been doing a lot of work over the past couple of weeks on our roads, and attached is a spreadsheet that I have for you, and basically our, what we have carried over for our county match to put towards road, and you'll see with our carryover and our appropriations, we have a little over $67,000 in county match funds available for roads and $9,000 for ditching. Under our projects, see zero, we have $15,000 allotted for seal patching, and we haven't done any of that, we do all that in the next couple of months, so that line item will go up. They did not get to the ditching on Bar Harbor where we had to remove some trees and reditch the ditch on that road, and it's on the island, and I'm hoping it gets done here in the spring, they just ran out of man-hours to do that. And it's kind of confusing because the county, their fiscal year is a calendar year, where ours goes from July to June, so it gets weird as far as our budget billing and on their budget. One thing I did want to point out is the replacement bridge for the Merrill Street Bridge, that was a $521,000 project when it was bid it out, and with federal grants that we received, state grants, county grants, we worked very hard on this project, it ended up costing the township $3,325. So that's pretty good. And going forward, we did the Colony Isles, and again, they're on calendar and we're here and we're not. The last major project we did was repaving of the Colony Isles down by Sass and Marine. It was estimated $135,000, the bid came in at 110, and so our, after, you know, we got, received a $50,000 grant for that project, so it ended up costing the township a little over $60,000 for that project. But all in all, you know, I think our, you hear in the news a lot about our roads and the tough, tough position, you know, spots, I'm not saying we don't have any potholes, but for the most part, our roads are pretty decent going forward. Now, I, I put these maps in, the colors didn't come out on yours. I wanted to explain to the board which is county primary roads and which is local roads. Our local roads for a township, we have a lot of roads that are paved that we're responsible for, we have 44 miles, and it's about, pretty close to the most in the whole county. The county primary road is Marsh Road, and then Stone Road from Marsh, and winds around, it goes past Benoit and goes, you know, Sword Out and up to Starville going north. Anchor Bay Drive is also a county primary. They're responsible for these roads, the county is, which you heard me talk, there's at least one probably, hopefully two this year, bridges being replaced on Anchor Bay Drive. Then on the island, the South Channel, North Channel Drive, Middle Channel Drive, and Golf Course Roads, those are county primaries too, so the township, money-wise, we don't have to worry about those roads. But all the rest of them, we definitely do. So I wanted to go over that with the board. Let's see. County residents, also, the county has a program which we've been able to take advantage of, we do a stone haul every year, and for years, we've been putting stone on our gravel roads, on Harson's Island one year, then on the mainland the second year, we'd rotate it. They have a program now, if you maintain what you've been doing, basically you kick in another five grand, you get $25,000 worth of gravel haul. And we've been taking advantage of that, and that's still going on, and we've been able to do all our roads a stone haul every, you know, every year, and it's been paid dividends on a lot of the roads. I think you noticed it on the island, don't you? And so that's something I think we should also continue to do. And like I said, we have to maintain these 44 miles of roads, it ain't cheap. And we do this without a road tax too, it just comes out of our general, general fund, which is, I think kudos to us, a lot of the townships, they have a quarter mil, half mil road tax that, you know, pays for their road projects, but we've been able to do that, do it without assisting. Going forward, I do have a date for our tour with the county road, I don't have it with me, it's in April, I'll let, I'll send an email out to the board, but where we go around and look at the condition of the roads, and mainly we'll go around, look at a lot of the cross culverts, any of those that have to be replaced. But going forward, I myself think either Field Road or Starville Road, north of Holland, or Fruit Road needs to be done, and I'm not sure in what order yet, and I think in the next couple, three weeks, as the frost comes out, that will tell us which one's worse. But I'm going to ask for what you guys think on that also. I'm pretty confident we can apply for the grants and we'll get at least $50,000 to go towards either one of those roads, so. That's what I have on roads so far. I've been doing, we're still in mediation with the MAFF Union, it's ongoing, it's been taking up a lot of time. To me, I get frustrated, I think it should be going faster than it is, but it is what it is. Been working with Dickinson Island Homeowners Association, as you know, they came to us last year with issues with high water in the river and the boat waves, and I worked with them about getting approval to put up some buoys in the middle channel with the DNR, and I'm happy to say we did get permits to do that, they are in the process of purchasing it themselves, and we'll have, it's not, no way, it's just a buoy that's going to say, explain the 200, 600-foot rule.
Yeah.
And...
Perfect.
And that being said too, I do think we are going to have another year of high water, it's going to be just as high, if not higher than last year. I'm already talking with the Marine, the St. Clair County Marine Patrol about additional enforcement, and I've just started shooting out emails to the freighters to see, you know, to make them slow down again, they voluntarily did it last year, and which worked out well, and I'm expecting the same from them this year. A lot of it is education. I have the county committed to five very large signs with the 200, 600-foot rule, we're talking about putting one down by the DNR access, I got to get permission from them, down at the beginning of the North Channel, one down on Gull Island, one is going to go in actually in Elginac by the state park or entering the North Channel, and we're still looking for a location, people are coming up the cutoff channel going into the South Channel, but that's all Canada, so we got to find a spot just north of that and on the US side. So, and then one at the mouth or the beginning of the Middle Channel. And so hopefully, we're going to have five very large signs, the county committed to pay for those, so. Been, been working, and again, if you live on the water, you know, you got to protect your property, people. You might have to consider putting splash rails up on your seawall, sandbags, we do have empty sandbags available, I think we have over 10,000 now, and I can get more from the St. Clair County Emergency, we have them for free. It's going to be damp, hate to say. See, been doing a lot of work on two grants, one is for the DNR Trust Fund Grant that we're trying to purchase nine acres on Harson's Island, that will be a kayak access site on the Crispin Blue Way. Basically, with, we'd be able to purchase, with this grant, we'll be able to purchase nine acres of property, costing the township of a little over $14,000. And been doing a lot of work on that, and also looking at grants for some outdoor exercise equipment into, that will be for our park next door. There'll be a lot coming on that here next month or two. We did decide to go with a new IT company, and it's been busy this week, in fact, today too, I think we pretty much finished it, the transition from our old network, and we have the new firewall and network security installed, and our emails rolled over. firewall and, and network security installed, and our emails rolled over. Attended a library advisory board meeting, and happy to say they are getting some bylaws put in place. And we're working on some challenges in logistics as far as them installing some new carpeting. And I'm not sure if the, if everyone realizes how the, or is the Elgnac Clay Library, the county actually owns and runs the library, but the township and the city own the building itself. We split it, and we, we split the maintenance of the building and that sort of thing. The advisory board is basically, they're not there to tell the library how to run the library. It's, it's about, you know, upkeep, upkeeping the, the building and, and maintenance. I know there is some interest in getting some security cameras in there, which I think would be, probably be a pretty good idea. And, but, and I'm also getting inspection done on the building so we can get some sort of forecast, you know, are we looking at a new roof in five or 10 or 20 years from now, heating system and that type of thing, windows and that type of thing. So I feel a little better doing, instead of, you know, waiting to something happens and then reacting, it's not good to be proactive on that sort of thing. We finished, I lied, I thought we finished converting all our lights to LEDs in the township office. The only ones we haven't done are these, right up in the middle there. So, but they're ordered. That's why they're off, I think. Uh, let's see. And yeah, I actually did miss about two and a half days last week. I was sick and had to stay home. I, cleanup weekend or day, it's gonna be June 2nd on the mainland. I'm gonna be putting that on the website and the newsletters. And Harson's Island is gonna be June 2nd and 3rd. Just wanna let everybody know, it's on the mainland, it's behind the water station. And then we usually have some people there accepting all the hazardous materials across the street at the fire station. And then on, on Harson's Island, it'll be at Brown's Field both June 2nd and 3rd. What?
No paint.
Nope, no latex paint. You can dry it out, put cat litter in and toss it in the regular garbage.
Yep, leave lid off.
Yep. I am looking at a lot of the budget. I started this week, and hopefully by the next meeting, there's some line items we have to adjust up and down. And I'm hoping to bring some, some budget adjustments to the board then. And if department heads, if you think of, start thinking about any major expenses or capital improvements that we might need for the next year. I wanna give kudos to our water department. Saturday, we had two major breaks at the same time, one down Merrill Street and Marina Drive. That was a gusher. And at the same time, down Anchor Bay Drive, down towards the end. And they were, they worked all day fixing the first one down by Sassy, and then they had to go down by Anchor Bay Drive and take care of that one. They were both bubbling pretty good. They worked hard, and I'm sure they had other things to do on a Saturday, watching Michigan State get their butts kicked maybe on TV. But, yeah, they didn't look good. But I wanna give kudos to them. There is a, we still have that boil water alert? Did we test it yet?
It's off. It's good.
We don't have to boil water anymore? We did have to boil water for a day on Anchor Bay Drive, but I know we were gonna test that at 6 o'clock tonight, so it's good, and that boil water alert is off. So we'll get the word out on that tomorrow. So I think that's all I have. Thank you. Okay, under new business.
Fire Chiefs Report.
Oh, yes, we do. See, I don't have my glasses on. We have a Fire Chiefs Report. Hey Chief, how we doing? Almost skipped ya.
Good evening. Attended one meeting in the month of February, and that was the Fire Chiefs, St. Clair County Fire Chiefs. Topic for discussion was fire department personnel doing CEU credits. The State Fire Marshal plans to put this program into effect sometime in 2019, and all fire personnel will have to do this, do the CEU credits to maintain their fire certification.
Online?
Some might be online, some might be in-house.
Okay.
We also, for the month, we assisted the Pearl Beach Lions for their Winter Fest. We used one of our dump tanks, we filled it full of lake water so they could supply it full of fish, so the young children could fish and catch a trout, I believe it was.
Yep.
So we helped them with that. I also would like to thank John Suzinski and Jonathan Volk for coming down while on duty. They resurfaced the ice rink for that skating. They did that. And we responded on a mutual aid to Ira Township last month, assisted them. They had a report of a person out on the ice in early morning hours. Our airboat went down with fire personnel, and they located and removed that person off the ice, brought him to shore. So guys did a fine job. And we're up on our call volume, about 40 calls from last year, so.
You're up, for the year-to-date, you're up 40 calls?
About 40 calls, so.
Not surprising.
Yep. So, that's it.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along on our new business. We have an interest payment for the Michigan Drinking Water Revolving Fund. This is the bond for the water plant renovation. And we have another year and a half, I think, left to go on that. And as you see, that's a $7,582.51 payment.
Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the interest payment for the Michigan Drinking Water Revolving Fund for $7,582.51, deriving from line item 591 debt dot 990 dot 995 dot 00.
Yeah, motion and support, and it is a budgeted item. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have an interest payment on the 2014 refunding bond of $20,931.25.
Make a motion for payment of the interest payment 2014 refunding bond in the amount of $20,931.25 from line item 591, 990, 995, 00.
Support. Okay, motion and support. Any questions or discussion on that? Again, it is budgeted. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Krista Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Arty Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, you might as well come on up here, Chief, my coach. First thing, we have to elevate full-time status. Mr. Van Team.
Well, as I, in the letter that I sent to you there, Nathaniel's been with us for approximately a year now. He's been working as a part-time status for us, mainly as one of our IRA cars. In that period of time, he's, he's done a very good job for us. He's really stepped up to the plate. He's eager to learn. He's been doing a really good job, and I think he'd be a very good asset to the department that fills a vacancy that was void by Officer Hopkins. So I think it'd be a longstanding career with Clay Township here. So I'd like to get the board's approval to elevate him up to full-time.
Up there, Nathan, will everyone see ya?
Nathaniel.
All right. Sorry.
We've been screwed up, man.
So, anyone have any questions?
Now, are we looking for a motion?
Yes.
Motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we elevate to full-time status. Officer Nathaniel Van Team.
Support.
Okay, a motion and support. When does this take effect? Immediately?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right, next we have vehicle purchase. Go ahead here, Chief.
Well, where we're sitting right now, as we've been kinda, I've been trying to push along as far as we can, we did budget this year for the replacement of one vehicle. However, where we're sitting right now, our lowest miles on a vehicle right now is over 80,000 miles. And we got 80 on one, 87 on another, 110 and 114. So our primary vehicles are getting up there. What I'd like to do is, with the monies that we received from the sale at the auction for our vehicles, which went quite well for us, that's gonna more than cover the purchase of the second vehicle.
What, what, we, what was it, 24,000 that we?
Right now, we're over $30,000.
Yeah, okay.
And we still have one vehicle that's going to auction on the 17th. So be a little bit more added to it right there. So with that, we've done pretty well with this. I think we come up to a pretty good system here that's gonna really take care of us in the future as well, as far as how we get rid of these vehicles. I, myself, I was, I was kinda hoping on half of what we got, so very surprised in how well it went.
Right.
It worked out real well for us. But, you know, obviously with, with these vehicles, you know, we do all the upfitting, maintenance, as far as any of that goes, all ourselves, so we do save that part of it. The only thing that I ask is that we get the approval to order necessary equipment that needs to be replaced, which is just normal upkeep stuff that has to be, you know, most of the stuff we, we transfer from car to car, but some things do need to be replaced because they do in time, like anything else, being used 24/7, it comes time for replacement, so.
When, when do you anticipate getting delivery of these?
Right now, they're telling me they're 60 to 90 days out, so we're, we're probably gonna be, I'm thinking sometime before June.
Okay.
Or right about June.
Okay.
Is what we're thinking right now.
And then going forward, next year, we may not have to buy a car next year or?
Well, nothing for primary vehicles.
Right.
At this point.
Well, nothing, zero to one cars, I should.
Right. And that's what we're looking at.
Yep.
We're looking at, like I say, with, I'm talking with the people that do the sale on our cars, and you know, some of the issues that we've had with the chargers that we have right now, where there's low enough mileage that I think we can probably get away with replacing these and, and the sale of these more than cost, cover the cost of a new vehicle. That and the point of these vehicles are not goodness, no. They're not all-wheel-drive, they're rear-wheel-drive, and this year's been a tough one. So that's what I'd like to eventually, this next year, and that's why I think this is, with the sale that we had on these vehicles this year, I think that's the thing that I'm hoping be able to allow us budgeting to go forward and make that replacement. And then we're pretty much, we're on track in a revolving.
Right.
As far as our cars goes, and replacement of our cars to stay on top of things, so we're right there right now.
Chief, if four primary vehicles, and let's say we get the, the two new ones that come in, so we will retire the two oldest of the four primary vehicles?
Well, what we had done is, we got rid of a couple other vehicles while we could still get some money out of them. One of those vehicles is gonna be put back to the detective's vehicle.
Maybe a secondary use instead of a primary use?
Yes.
Okay.
So that'll be Detective Sergeant Cope will be driving that vehicle.
Yep.
We'll pretty much put that down to like an unmarked vehicle. Then the, the third vehicle in the fleet is generally, usually we use a lot in the summertime when we have the extra patrols on to cover the volume of calls. So that's pretty much how that'll lay out, which it'll put us right where we need to be.
Okay. So at this point, nothing from our fleet goes to auction?
No.
When two new vehicles are purchased?
Nope. These, these ones are gonna stay with us.
But next year?
We pretty much stripped down everything that we had to, so everything that we're not utilizing is gone.
Got it.
Yeah, if we do something next year, we'd probably auction off the chargers.
Yeah. I'm talking to them now, and from what they're, they're telling me, I think we could do pretty well on them. And I think I'd rather do that than, because they're gonna end up being five years old. So I think I'd rather do that than, than end up having to dump a bunch of money into them.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone wanna make a motion, or they have?
That being said, I'll make a motion to purchase, the police to purchase a vehicle, two vehicles, each one at $28,890 from line item 207-970, and outfitting, outfitting for $7,500 if they need it for line, from line item 207, 799.01. Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any further discussion or questions?
We're gonna address the onboard computers in the next.
Yep.
Thank you.
Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Arty Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, next, we have the new item that we amended is police purchase of car computers.
Basically, where we sit with that, we've come to the point that we've kinda cannibalized everything we have to keep some of them up and running that we've got right now. These computers that we have here are roughly probably between six and seven years old, so we've gotten pretty good use out of them, pretty good life out of them. What I have researched is, instead of buying these Tough Books, brand new, which are gonna cost upwards of close to $5,000 apiece, there's a company that I'm looking at going with that completely refurbishes these better than manufacturers' specs, gives us a three-year unlimited warranty along with 24-hour tech support with them. They're pretty much guaranteed to run better than if they were, we were to buy these things new, which as you can see, at the price of, I think it was $949 per unit, is substantially low. We're gonna be able to buy three of them for less than what we can purchase for one. This is an item that we budgeted for, which we seen it was forthcoming. So we're just, we're at that point right now where we can't, we can't really get any much, much further with the ones we're using right now, so.
It's, I think it's a good price too. They are warranty, right?
Yes. Three years.
Three years.
Line item is 2807?
Oh, let's see here.
207, it's in here.
Line number?
I'm sorry.
207000742.
742, yes.
Yeah, but we had a budgeted item when we applied it at 4.2. At $900, you're looking for three of them, right?
Yes, 949.
Which totals 2807?
Correct, for all three.
Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the purchase, the police purchase of the onboard car computers from a budgeted line item for a total cost of $2,807.
Motion and support. Any more discussion on that?
What happens to the old ones?
Yeah, we'd use them, keep them around for parts if we need them, and which we've all, we've done in the past, so, and, you know, if something goes with the keyboard or something like that, a lot of times, we can cannibalize them and to keep the, the other ones up and running.
And cycle through.
Yeah.
Yeah, these Tough Book laptops, they are very expensive, and if you can get them under $1,000, that's a heck of a deal. I remember, I used to buy them for $10,000.
Oh, yeah. And what's nice, these come with a solid-state hard drive too, so.
Yeah.
A lot more rugged, you know, with what you're getting in the vehicles here, so.
Price on those, the hard drives come down a lot.
Yeah.
Because they're getting more popular, so. Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of purchase of computers for the cars? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, we have discussion for full-time hire.
Well, as I think you all know, I've been, and I've talked to you, I've been talking with our school superintendent now for several months, and actually the superintendent before him, as far as the need of, of having someone in our schools, and having an officer in these schools, keeping their finger on their... and having an officer in these schools keeping their finger on the pulse, and basically, uh, having an idea of what's going on within our schools. This is a program that we used to have, and unfortunately, due to budgetary concerns, this program went away. When we did have this program, myself personally, I believe it was priceless. Our, our officer that was in the schools, not only was he there as a police officer, becau- be, he became a friend, a mentor, and basically a counselor to a lot of these kids. And these kids got to know him, got to respect him, got to trust him, and we got a lot of priceless information out of that, you know, and it, it's the best way of stopping things before they happen. Not to mention having someone within our schools to take action, God forbid something does occur. The biggest thing i- is, obviously, we see what's been going on, and the things aren't getting any better. And, but like I say, this is something that I've been talking about here for several months, and Superintendent Latos has been very receptive on this. In the last couple of weeks, we've very, we've been talking much harder on this, and he's come to the same conclusion as me, that this is something that we need to do. We can't, we can't keep waiting and keep putting this off. I know he has spoke with his board, and it sounds like his board is feeling the same exact way. Uh, the proposal between the two departments is that it is something that we would split the cost of that officer. Uh, one other thing which works out pretty well with us, and that is, when that officer is out of school in the summer times, that's gonna help enhance us when our busiest times are here. Um, not to mention usually when people are taking vacations and everything else, and it, it puts a pretty good hurt on us. And the fact that we're not getting any slower, you know, we just keep getting busier and busier, you know, like everybody else. But, I, I just, you know, our, our first and foremost job is protecting our citizens. But myself, there, there's no greater asset than our children. And I think first and foremost, budgetary or not, how do we not do it? You know, I, I don't think there's an argument out there that can sit there and, and give me a, a good valid argument of why this is something we shouldn't do. You know, we protect everything that's dear to us, now this is the most dear thing to us. And I wanna have someone that these kids can, can get to know, get to relate with, and get to trust. You know, coming in there, walking in there every day for them just to see us for, you know, ten, fifteen minutes, which we've been doing on a regular basis, and we've gotten just great positive feedback on it. But the kids don't really get to know, know our guys. You know, this is a chance for us to change that, and I, I'm looking for the board's support to go forward on this and take action on something that, uh, we should've been doing all along, in my opinion.
Just wanna add to that for the board, um, the estimated cost, basically it costs us eighty grand for a cop a year. And, uh, the school board's gonna split it, so the cost for us is gonna be about forty thousand dollars plus. There, there's gonna be some upfront, um, I wanna say setup costs, but, uh, you know, we might need to get a gun.
Typical outfitting of an officer.
Typical outfitting cost, so, so in the beginning, it's gonna be a little bit more, but it's basically gonna be about forty thousand dollars. Now, that being said, during the summer months, we have a lot of police that, uh, we have a lot of things going on, special events, uh, we're busy, uh, we have people that wanna take vacations, and, uh, this will a- actually reduce our overtime, uh, now, because we'll, we'll have an extra, uh, basically, you know, two more feet on the ground where, uh, you know, they can, can, um, spread out or, or cut down on overtime that we now have, uh, you know, with the special, I mean, we're busy in the summer, just flat out.
There's, there's no way.
I, I think, I look at the man count, I think fifteen years ago, we, I think we had three or four more cops.
Yes.
Uh, on staff that we do now, and we're probably fifty percent busier than we are back then, too. So, um, I just wanna make that point to the board that, you know, basically, I, I think it'll uptick our costs, uh, forty grand, and, uh, and then some little bit more on incidentals. And, uh, I personally believe that, uh, it, it, it's gonna pay dividends coming back to us as far as, uh, you know, in teaching these kids, uh, mentoring, uh, who knows? Maybe, um, we could start some kind of a cadet program with the schools. We're having a hard time finding people that wanna be cops.
That's, that's one of the biggest challenges right now, is, is just that.
And, and, uh, ma- maybe we can, uh, get some home, homebrewed kids to choose that profession or something. And I, I also think that once they're out of school, it'll continue to pay dividends 'cause they'll, they'll build a trust with the police.
Absolutely.
So.
And like I say, we've seen it in the past, and it's, it's just worked phenomenally. But you know, unfortunately, when we go a spell with, you know, things aren't really happening, and things are quiet within the media and such like that, we, we tend to lose sight of these things. And until unfortunately, a tragedy happens, that brings it back up to the forefront. That's when it's too late.
Right.
You know, it, the old saying holds true, you know, you're better to have it and not need it than to need it and not have it. And that, that's what comes across loudly here, and I think you're, you're gonna be seeing this all across this country, and I'm hoping by the talks that are going on, that we're gonna, uh, see some federal money for this to try to help with this. I mean, the way they're talking now is they, they want to start seeing this within every school if they can. And, I, I mean, it, it, it's common sense, let's do something to keep our kids safe, and, and you'll, let's try to avert something before it happens. Cause you know, it, it, let's face it, we're, we're not any different than anywhere else. You know, things can happen, let, let's try to stay ahead of it and let's be proactive.
So, just, uh, question, or you'll keep us apprised as to the procedures and?
Absolutely.
As you're moving forward, have the rotation and?
Absolutely.
Schools and stuff?
Yes. And, and it, what would happen is, the way we've been talking is, the, the officer would be based out of the high school, however, the officer will be responsible for all the schools within our district here. Um, he'd make regular visits to all of them, he'd be known throughout all the schools. Um, if there is any kinda issues that are going on with this school, he would be the one that would be handling it. You know, we have, in the last, last two weeks here, we've had some, and I'm sure you've seen with social media and everything else, we've had some pretty good instances with some kids that, um, we were able to take care of quite quickly. But with that being said, this is something we were able to, to get ahead of before there was any sort of problem. That's not always the case, where if we have somebody that's a little closer to it, they pick up on these things a little easier. Instead of someone else having to pick up on it and come to us. You know, I, I wanna be able to have somebody that gets to know these kids and gets an idea of what they're going through and what's going on, or what's going through their mind. Um, and like I say, sometimes, you know, the kids aren't gonna go up and, and tell just anybody, but we've found in the past, if there is an officer there, they'll take the time and go talk to him and say, hey, you know, so-and-so said this or this. At least it gives us a heads up at that point, you know, opposed to them having to come down to our station to say something. Um, puts some, puts the officer on a whole different playing field.
And as a former school teacher, the kids know everything.
Oh, they sure do, you better believe it. If you wanna know something, that's the way you're gonna get it.
One of the kids.
Absolutely.
But they have to have?
Travels quick.
Have some trust in you, like you say, with the officer.
And you gotta have to have the right person for that. I've been working, uh, gathering policies and procedures from other departments, um, getting some ideas there, and obviously gotta formulate something that's gonna be, you know, unique to our situation here and our demographic. Basically, with all of them that I see here, it is, it's basically, um, a special assignment program that, you know, we are gonna place somebody in there that's gonna be the right person for that position. You can't just put anybody in there, it's gotta be somebody that's gonna be the right person to be able to fit with the kids. You know, and basically, you know, it's gonna be someone that can relate with the kids. And let's face it, not, not all of us are built for that. But you gotta know, and you know, obviously with the guys we work with, we know who's, who's best laid out for those kinda, uh, assignments, so.
So, do we have to make a motion?
What are we looking to do here today?
Make a motion.
Make a motion to post the position, or?
Go ahead with, uh, a full-time hire for, uh, uh, I would call him a off- a school resource officer?
Yep.
I'll make a motion that the police department go ahead with their search for a full-time hire for a school resource officer.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any more discussion or questions? I think we reviewed the anticipated costs, uh, going forward for the township, so. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries, thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much, yep.
Uh, next on the agenda, I have, I'm recommending that we appoint, uh, to the Elginak Clay Library Board, Nancy Stewart. Uh, I have an email from her, and she's, uh, willing and able to serve in this capacity, and looking forward to it. Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we look to appoint Ms. Nancy Stewart?
Yep.
To the Elginak Clay Library Board.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support, it's gonna be a three-year term. Uh, the other two people that are on the library board, we're not sure when they're appointed, so, uh, that we're going to reappoint them, one for a one-year and one for a two-year term, just to get everyone on a rotation. So, uh, next meeting or two, we're gonna have those come in to you, too, I just wanted to be clear. So, we have motion and support to appoint Nancy Stewart to the Elginak Clay Library Board. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Uh, next we have reimbursement request for the MCAT certification for Wendy Meldrum. Uh, with everything, it was three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents, and she did pass. Congratulations, Wendy. Entertain a motion for the reimbursement.
I'll make a motion to approve the reimbursement request for three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents.
Support.
That would be out of the line for training and education for the assessing department.
Support, out of support.
Okay, we have motion and support, any discussion on that? Hearing none, uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Uh, next we have on the agenda, uh, fifteen hundred dollar stipend, annual stipend for Wendy Meldrum. Um, after a little bit of discussion today, I, I'd like to postpone this till the next meeting. Uh, we might handle this a little differently, if we talk about more then, I'd like to just bring this back on the next meeting.
Support.
So, uh, I have motion and support to postpone the, uh, stipend for Wendy Meldrum. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. And next we have a discussion on, uh, our, uh, mission and vision statement and goals for the township. I gave this, I don't know, it's been about a couple, three meetings ago?
Yep.
I'm gonna read them real quick first. Our, uh, for our, our Clay Township mission statement. "We protect, preserve, promote, and improve the quality of life in our community by providing leadership, services reflecting the pride, values, and vision of Clay Township." And then, uh, the vi- the vision statement, Clay Township vision statement, 'cause it refers to that in our mission statement. "To protect, encourage, the environmental, economic, historical, and residential character of the community while creating a destination full of recreational opportunities." And then under that, we have ten goals, and I asked you, the board, to, uh, assess how you believe we've been doing on these goals and, uh, give us a little grade and, and let, let me know if, uh, if you think we're getting better, we're getting worse, or staying level. Just, you know, I, I, it'd be nice, we could self-assess ourselves to see where we have to concentrate on more going forward, basically. Goal one is to protect people and property. How do you guys think we're doing on that?
Mr. Supervisor, if I could be so bold?
Yep.
I would like to request the postponement of our discussion. I think these are very important issues, and at an hour and forty-five minutes and counting?
Yeah.
And without our, one of our trustees?
True.
Mark Burchard not?
I have no problem with that.
I wonder if we just can't push this till the next meeting?
I have no problem with that.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
That's a motion. Support. I'm gonna read the goals real quick.
Yeah, great.
Okay, uh, goal one, protect people and property. Goal two, maintain and enhance the township infrastructure. Goal three, preserve and enhance the quality of life. Four, protect and enhance the natural environment. Five, improve economic vitality and development opportunities. Six, provide efficient, effective, and essential support services by pursuing partnerships with other organizations. Seven, influence regional and state issues and decisions. Eight, encourage community involvement through boards, commissions, committees, stewardships, programs, and volunteerism. Nine, preserve, enhance, and celebrate the historical elements of Clay Township. And ten, provide diverse, active, passive, and social recreational o- opportunities. So, that's them, and I have no problem of postponing that to our next meeting. Yeah, we, we have motion and support?
And support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of postponing the discussion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And, uh, anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, uh, next we have Resolution twenty eighteen oh six, proceed with the Colony Water Project. As you see, we have, um, eighty-three percent that did sign. This is just to go ahead and proceed it, doesn't address like the individual assessments, that will be handled at the next one, uh, public hearing. But as you see, we, we do have significant interest and need. I think most of the people here were definitely for it, the project. Uh, we do have some questions about how the individual assessment's being handled, so.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution two thousand eighteen oh six, uh, Colony Drive Waterline Special Assessment, Resolution two oh five, for the water supply distribution system of Colony Drive, Clay Township, Michigan.
Support.
Okay, a motion and support, any, uh, discussion on that?
Can they rescind their support of the petition?
I, I don't think so, not, not once it's accepted. Once it's already accepted, they can't, um, do that, but, I mean, we can kinda take that in account. Eighty-three percent is a pretty high margin, I mean, we passed them in the past at around sixty percent, so.
That's overwhelming.
But, but there, there, some people did bring up some valid points, but, um, which, uh, we can, we can take account and, and, uh, and go from there. Any other discussion? We do have motion and support, right?
We do.
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Ernie Brison?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Sandy Kufal?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, actually, we can do this in one motion, is to set the public hearing to confirm the special assessment role, and that will be at April second meeting. Uh, we have to put it up for, um, public notice and put a mailing out, right? And, uh, and, uh, at the same time, Resolution two thousand eighteen oh seven to confirm the assessment role of the County Water Project.
Make a motion to set the second public hearing for confirming special assessment role on April second, two thousand eighteen.
And, are we at, doing them both, or should we?
As well as Resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero seven, to confirm assessment role of the Colony Water Project.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any, uh, discussion on that? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Sandy Kufal?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Ernie Bryson?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, next we have board member comments. Who wants to go first?
Me.
Cindy.
Yes.
Um, I wanna thank the DPW for their hard work over the weekend repairing two water main breaks. Um, and thank you to dispatcher Rose, and I'm not sure who come on after you. Zelinski. Um, dispatcher Zelinski also. I know you guys fielded a ton of phone calls um, from all the wins alerts. However, I appreciate you sending it out townshipwide, because it did give other opportunity to pe- you know, um, for people to pass along that information as well. Um, and also to Cindy Babish, because she trucked in here on Saturday to get all those alerts up on our website as well. Um, so thank you to all you guys.
Joanne?
Uh, the only comment I have is that there is no ZBA meeting, zoning board of appeals meeting this month. It's been, there's nothing on the agenda for it. That's it.
Okay, Chrissy?
No comment.
Chris?
I have nothing, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay. You got a, got a, uh, engagement afterwards? Sandy?
Well, I would like to congratulate Shelby Kapanowski?
Yes.
For her win at the state bowling tournament this weekend, and she is our state champion.
Wow.
Yes.
That being said, we also had three wrestlers make it to placing at the state tournament this weekend as well, so congratulations to them.
Muskrats.
Yes. And I would also like to encourage everyone to sign up for the wins program. You can go to St. Clair County dot org to the emergency management office section and get signed up so that more than a handful of people can get those notifications.
Thank you. I stole my thunder. She's actually my neighbor on the island, very good kid, and, uh, also people, you gotta sign up to wins. Please, please do. We can, it's a good way, efficient way for us to get the word out on anything going on. And, you know, we, we changed the road to, uh, Muskrat Run. And I wanted to bring a, a discussion and sometime to the board. When and what criteria do we use to put someone, you know, the, the thing was to use that area as far as, uh, some posting accolade signs. And, uh, just think about it a little bit, uh, when and what's the criteria, we put somebody up there and, uh, maybe we should go back maybe five years and gather all information and start doing something along those lines? I mean, I just want to, uh,
Showcase the kids a little.
Yeah, exactly. That's what it's for.
All right.
You know, we did that for, for school pride, and I think it's time we, we show it off a little bit more, so.
I do have one more thing.
Oh, you do?
I do. I would like to, um, thank Steve Sadler. I appreciate you coming in here on behalf of AYFL. It's not very often we get somebody in here thanking us or providing donations, um, but it is a well work, welcome format, so thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, until a water main breaks. Yes, thank you, and, uh, also, congratulations. Yes, so. One more motion?
To adjourn.
All right, all in favor? All right, thanks for coming, everybody. Have a good couple of weeks. This is the weekend we turn our clocks ahead, spring ahead.